The City Planning Commission on August 11. I do apologize if my mics are not on. We'll try to talk a little bit louder tonight. But he would all rise to the place of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sue, could roll call for me, please?
Commissioner Cadwalader.
Here.
Commissioner Chambers.
Here.
Commissioner Holst.
Here.
Commissioner Cadula.
Here.
Commissioner Barnett.
Here.
And Chair Ellis.
Here. Would you entertain a motion? I'm almost there. I will entertain a motion to excuse Colin. Do I have support for this?
Yes. I'll make that motion.
I'll support it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda as written.
I'll make that motion.
I will support any discussion on the agenda for this evening. Okay. All in favor of the approval of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Very good. Now, we have the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting on July 14. Do we, I will entertain a motion to accept these minutes as written. I'll make the motion. Do I have support? Any discussion on those? Okay, all in favor of support, all in favor of minutes of last meeting? Approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, very good. Now, tonight, I'd like to open it up to the public for comments or concerns of items not on the agenda. We will have a couple of public hearings tonight, but anything not on the agenda, if you'd like to come up to the podium and talk, I'll give you this opportunity, we'll give you this opportunity to do so. If there are no public comments, I will close that and move right on into old business. Andy, can you run down the consideration of accessory dwelling units?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what you have in front of you tonight is something that you've been working on for the last few months, which is an amendment to the zoning ordinance that would permit and regulate accessory dwelling units within the city. So just to kind of walk through the ordinance, the first section of the ordinance includes a definition. The second section is just kind of a cleanup thing that allows them as an accessory building or to be, you know, or accessory building to be used as a dwelling. The next several sections, three through six, permit accessory dwelling units as a special land use in the residential districts of the city. So the SR, R1, R2, and R3. In those instances, it would be a special use, there would be a public hearing, notice to the neighbors, and then an additional set of standards that have to be satisfied. Those additional standards are spelled out in Section 7 of the amendment, which amends Section 17.04 of the zoning ordinance to include all of those regulations. We've been through these a few times, supposed to kind of review them briefly. So again, they'd be permitted only in the SR, R1, R2, and R3 districts, and only with special land use approval by the planning commission. Only one would be permitted per parcel. They'd use, could be attached or detached. The height would be limited to the maximum requirements for accessory building in that district. Would not be able to exceed any kind of maximum lot coverage standard. It would prohibit an RV, travel trailer, or a local home to be used after the ADU. Quier than ADU to include a kitchen, bathroom, and sleeping area separate from the primary residence, so it needs to be able to function independently and stand as its own dwelling unit. It'll have applicable codes. Tended to public water, wastewater systems where available. It requires the property owners to occupy either the primary residence or the ADU. So it comes up sometimes, or a question that is brought up at times, if you have a main building and you have an ADU on a property, well, what happens if they're both rented out and both rented out to separate people? Things like that. So we added a provision in here that requires a property owner to occupy either one or the other. Under subsection C, it needs to be compatible with the principal dwelling unit on the lot and the building form, it could be consistent with the principal structure and harmonious with the neighborhood. Needs to be operated and maintained in a way that's compatible with adjacent properties, not result in excessive traffic, parking congestion, or noise. And may not be utilized for short-term rental purposes. That would be either the principal building or the ADU. So if I have an ADU, then you can't have a short-term rental on that same property. It also has a minimum gross floor area of 400 square feet with a maximum of 800. Requirement of one additional off-street parking space. Height limited to that of the principal dwelling. And then we also added some standards under subsection 5 that allows the planning commission to modify a few of these standards during the special land use preview process. This is something that we added after the last meeting where you would kind of ask for some of this flexibility. Well, what if it makes sense to allow one to be a little bit taller under certain circumstance? Or what if we need to look at maybe something a little bit bigger or a little bit smaller? So under subsection 5, we have subsections A through D, which give the planning commission some factors to consider if you're going to contemplate moving from one of those standards, which would be the size of the property, the impact on adjacent properties, or physical characteristics, limitation of the land, and if the intent purposes of that section would be better served by such modification. The last section in here requires the ADU restriction. So this is language that a bunch of communities have adopted, where basically we want to make sure that both the principal building and the ADU cannot be transferred separately. So we don't want to see the ADU be turned into a condo unit and sold to somebody else, while the primary building is, you know, owned by a separate party. So it just ties them both together so they can't be sold separately, which is something that we would also require by the commission approval, and would be something that everybody would be, would be subject to. So that's the amendment in a nutshell. I'm happy to answer any questions. Because this is a public hearing, we'll need to accept public comment on the amendment. After public comment, when you close the public hearing, you can either make additional changes to the ordinance, and if you are comfortable with it, either with changes or as it's presented tonight, you could recommend approval to the city council after next meeting. Are there any questions for me?
Questions? Questions? I have one question. Short-term rental defined?
Yes.
So we're in our...
Yep, so we permit short-term rentals also as a special land use in the city that is defined as the short-term rental of a dwelling unit for 30 days or less. So, I mean Airbnb is the short, you know, the short version of it, but we're looking at, you know, a week or two week long rentals. Someone's living someplace for six months, that's not a short-term rental, that's just a regular, regular tenant.
So, do we make a motion now or after the public hearing?
Open the public hearings first, unless public comment, and then if there's any adjustments you need to make based on that, we can talk about that.
It's the first of three public hearings that we're going to open. Please keep your comments and information. After I introduce the topic to five minutes, there is a timer, or isn't there?
No, we're...
Okay. So try to keep your public comments to five minutes. Come up to the podium, introduce yourself, tell us where you live, state your address, and we'll go from there. Okay? Come on up.
Good evening, Steve Doyle, 706 Riverside Drive. What's being proposed tonight is allowing a second rental home on existing traditional lots. I don't think people, when they purchased their home three years ago or 30 years ago in Lowell, that they were going to be faced with their neighbor turning their garage into a rental home for a family of four. And the setback distance is only three feet. And actually, I use family of four just as an example. There's actually, there's no limit, it could be two or it could be five feet. Or they could be faced with the fact that their neighbor could build a new 20-foot by 40-foot rental home in their backyard, three feet from your lot line. The new ordinance states that the new home shall not result in excessive traffic, parking congestion, or noise. The new home shall maintain a compatible relationship to adjacent properties and shall not significantly impact the privacy, light, air, or parking for adjacent properties. These standards cannot be met. Do you think, do you think when your neighbor rents out the garage or builds a 20-by-40 rental home for a family of four in their backyard, from, in three feet from your lot line, that these standards can be met? I don't think they can be met, there's no precedence for it. Any family I know comes, usually comes with at least two cars. It's hard enough to park people's cars on our existing lots now, we have small lots. These additional new rental homes on existing residential lots are not enhancing our traditional neighborhoods and the quality of life. They're not in harmony with the existing housing and peaceful living. Thank you.
Steve? Come on up, please.
Hello. Hi, my name's Nat Letzma, and I live at 525 North Hudson Street, Lowell, Michigan. And I just had a couple of questions. Has anyone from town come to you and asked about having additional buildings on their property? Has this been brought up like a grassroots need to be met? Maybe we can talk about that later, but is, I didn't know if this is coming from the need of the people, if they have spoken to you and you're responding to meet their needs. I didn't know where this topic originated from. Anyway, maybe that's be considered another time. But if it's not an issue, if it's not brought to you by your constituents, why is this now an issue for the planning board? I'm just wondering how it raised to consciousness, where's its origin? And then my third question is, would these buildings lower the value of the neighboring homes? You know, I know about population density, I've lived in New Jersey. Population density is not a pretty thing. And you have, I think one reason why Lowell is your next best place is because people come for expansive area, come for the quality of life, come for some space. They're moving out of the dense population areas of Grand Rapids, or it could be New Jersey, whatever. They come to the country for neighbors, neighborhoods, and high quality of life. Anyway, these are just some thoughts that are on my mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Nat. Anyone else like to speak? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing for accessory dwelling units. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we decided to do this, other neighboring cities do this, but our master plan must promote more housing, and this is a economic... affordable, more housing for, to bring people into Lowell. And that's how it kind of came up in discussion of the planning commission.
There was, yeah, remind the commissioners that there was one or two people...
Several petitions have come before us, for this, from citizens of Lowell.
Yeah, it's, it is a little bit of both. This was something that was initially sort of brought up as we explored ways to expand affordable and payable housing options within the city. But there also have been comments made by the public and requests to enable this kind of thing. So this approach, we talked about whether it should be by right or by special land use. Ultimately, you guys lean towards the special land use approach because it does give you a little more discretion, a little more control over how they are placed and constructed and help make those judgments, so.
Also, the, for the first question, there is, we incorporated a size limit according to the residents. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes. We know it's 400, maximum will be 100 as the size, so.
I just want to comment, in absence of a public adjust system, we're having real difficulty hearing back here. So that's just an awareness.
Okay, I'll try to talk a little louder. I got to get ready to go back to school too, so it's...
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I'll just close.
I want to say something just so we understand our terminology. Not every ADU is required to be a rental.
Correct.
So it's possible that no ADU would be a rental, so I don't want to think those two terms are combined. It's the same thing.
Yes, sir. Our thought was that, okay, a planning member wants to come in, you can rent to them, and we just didn't want it to be a short-term Airbnb sort of in-and-out sort of rental.
I think it was more parents, their children couldn't afford to get housing on their own. I think that's kind of what drove this.
I think that was the original request that we had heard, was somebody looking for eight older children or aging parents having a place to live, was the original request that we had heard. So they were not, the requests we have heard were not to add rental income to a property, but to have actual family, space for family members first.
Okay, any other questions? I will entertain a motion to adopt this and send it on to the city council.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Any more discussion? Okay, Sue, roll call votes.
Commissioner Cadwalader.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Holst.
Yes.
Commissioner Cadula.
Yes.
Mr. Barnett.
Yes.
And Chair Ellis.
Yes. Very good. Okay, the next full business public hearing is the master plan. We adopt the, we've been working on this, can you give me a summary of the last several months and what we've been doing on the master plan here?
So this is the, so the master plan has been in development for a couple of years now. This is a process that we started, I think, in 2022. So this is a, this is a large undertaking for the city and for the planning commission specifically. The plan serves as your basis for zoning, for development, for redevelopment. It's a policy document for the city. So this is a fairly lanky document, it's almost 100 pages. It really walks through the city's demographics, its natural features. It gives you a large sort of all-encompassing snapshot of where the city stands today. It also makes recommendations for future changes to our reception on goals and objectives. We get into and we talk about growth and development, community image, land use, housing, transportation, community services, a bunch of different topics. The plan also contains a future land use map, which is similar to a zoning map, but it doesn't carry the force of law. So you're, so the future land use map, from a policy perspective, makes recommendations in terms of how future land in the city should be developed, what kind of, you know, the character of new development, the character of redevelopment, the city lot sizes, land uses, things like that. And then lastly, it also contains a series of strategies to actually implement the plan. So we'll talk about what we actually need to do to make it happen. We talk about things like making additional changes to the zoning ordinance, taking steps to activate the Flat River, implementing the city's placemaking plan, adopting a housing strategy, and there's a bunch of other things there. It's important to note that the plan was based on a lot of public input. This isn't something that the planning commission or anybody else has sort of made up in a vacuum. The city was very intentional and made a large effort to engage with the public. That included a community-wide survey, which was done in late 2023. There were two pop-up planning events that were held. One was held at the Summer Concert Series, and then we did another one at the Expo. We met with middle school students in late 2023 and spent an hour with them in the classroom, walking through, talking about what they think about their neighborhood, what they think about the city, how they want to see things change. Then we also had visioning sessions with the Parks Commission, the DDA, planning commission here, and the city council. So we received input from both the public and city stakeholders and officials. We put together, again, it's a, it's a long, you know, fairly broad document, but it's something that, you know, will serve the city for, you know, years, decades, and really help to enable the kind of development that the city wants to see moving forward. That's one of the biggest steps, is to make sure that we are, we can't require development, we can't say you shall come here and build, but we need to make sure that the environment is right, that we are creating a policy framework that encourages and enables the type of growth and change that we want to see, if it is going to happen.
That's what you have tonight.
So process-wise, we get, you know, we do all of this work. There's a distribution that happened, which is done by action of the city council. The city council distributed the draft for review back in May. The state statute requires that once they do that, we have to wait for 63 days. So that 63 days was up a few weeks ago, so that's why we scheduled the public hearing for tonight. And so this resolution here that is on the screen and was included in your packets, Resolution 1-25 would, would sort of grant approval of that plan by the planning commission and recommend its final adoption to the city council. This is a public hearing, it was noticed as a public hearing, and also noticed was sent out to the neighboring townships and some other entities as required by the state. So Mr. Chairman, this is something where we'll have to open and close a public hearing. Then after that, if the planning commission is inclined to recommend approval, it could just simply make a motion to adopt Resolution 01-25 as proven.
Okay.
So that, again, happy to answer any questions, otherwise we can move forward with the public hearing.
Do you have any questions?
Did we receive any feedback from the distribution to neighboring communities?
Received, I think, maybe one email from M.D. So we can talk about those. So they have some, some comments that basically just talk about trees along M21 should not impact sightlines, clarifying that new pedestrian crossings would require a permit, this is a crossing of Main Street. Any proposed intersection change on Main Street would also require a permit. Should not negatively impact the safety mobility of vehicular and non-vehicular traffic. And then there is a comment, just about one of our traffic council was shown earlier in the document here as well. So they indicated that the number that we have in the plan covers a little bit larger area and doesn't necessarily represent the actual conditions in downtown Lowell. But other than that, I don't consider those to be substantive changes. We consider to incorporate those comments into the draft if we want to. But other than that, no, we did not hear anything from any of your neighboring townships or whatever.
Question. I'd really like to thank everybody who's had a hand in this, it's been a long time, especially past planning commissioners who aren't with us on the board anymore. Everybody had, has done a lot of work, and to the public for their opinions. It's always good to know the public wants, and it's, sometimes it's crickets out there, and it's, it's good to hear from the public. But at this moment, I'd like to open a public hearing in reference to the master plan. Once again, try to keep your comments to five minutes or less. Come up, state your name and your address, and listen.
Steve Doyle, 706 Riverside Drive. I guess for the record, as far as the master plan, that we've had some negative comment regarding ADUs. The ADUs are part of the master plan, they're in there. So for the record, there's some negative comment. I'd like to ask the city manager also if there's been any other correspondence of any comments about ADUs. Perhaps not. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Chair Ellis, I do have one email to read into record.
Okay.
My name is Eric Brayden, and I reside at 718 Riverside Drive. I am ready to express my concerns regarding accessory dwelling units. In my opinion, this ordinance may not produce enough positive effect in our community. I believe it would encourage construction that leads to unnecessary congestion, parking challenges, and strained access for residents. Additionally, I am concerned that it could negatively impact the harmony and relationships between neighbors. I reviewed the minutes from the last planning commission meeting concerning the BNB at 529 Avery, which I see as a relevant case study illustrating the potential issues that could arise under the proposed ordinance requiring excessive amount of planning commission's time. Thank you for your time and consideration, sincerely, Eric Brayden.
Hi, I'm Mary Elaine LaPonce, I reside at 775 Alden Nash Avenue Southeast, but I also own City Property at 717 East Main Street. I apologize, I was out of town, I missed that the master plan was on the agenda. Otherwise, I would have sent you some written comments, because I normally don't like to talk at meetings I'm covering. But I have three things that I just wanted to mention that I haven't seen. You know, one is building height. You know, in our old master plan, we had that if you were going to put up a three-story building, it should be at least 150 feet away from an existing single-family home. I don't think there's anything in this new master plan like that. And maybe 150 feet isn't the right distance, but I feel like there might be, there should be some sort of buffer, you know, if someone's going to build a large building next to an existing single-family home. I also think for the density requirements, I know it still says in the highly, high-density areas, eight to 10 units is what historically has been done. But with PDUs, there doesn't seem to be any sort of guidelines. And I feel like, you know, maybe you don't want to put a guideline, but maybe there should be like a minimum, you know, size per unit, so that someone's not like making postage stamp apartments in the city. And then finally, the last thing, just because, so I was planning commission chair when the 2007 planning, or master plan went through. And one thing I've realized after years of watching meetings is I don't think we were clear with the mixed-use zone. And maybe your intent is different, but we always intended mixed-use to be like, you could have a house here, you could have a business here, you could have a house and a business here on the same lot. And I feel like in a lot of discussions with planning commission, it has felt like, oh, if it's mixed-use, we need to find a way to incorporate both. And at least in 2007, that was never our intent. So I don't know if your intent is different, but I just feel like going back in hindsight, I wish that we had been a little bit more clear in how we wrote that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Elaine.
Hello, my name is Merle Barfis, I live at 215 and a half West Main Street. Thank you for spending the time to make this happen, because it is, it is long overdue, for sure. And so I know a lot, a lot of work went into this, so that's, that's super valuable. Yeah, it was 89 pages, I read every one of them. Not in 63 days, but in a couple days. But I did come across a few things, and this does kind of line up with what Mary Elaine mentioned. The place that I did see a number was in the downtown area, it was on page 77, in the second column. It specifically said build up, not out. And then up to three to four stories that complement the historic character of the existing building should be encouraged. I'd like you to keep in mind, the current zoning states at 40 feet is the maximum height, I believe, in this area. It did come up when we were working on the line shack over here. When you hit four stories, I did look up the average height of a four-story building, and you're pushing 50 feet on that. Our building that we live in, 215, same line that Marty is in, there is two stories. They are big stories, because it's an older building. But if you put a four-story building in that area, in this historic district, it will dwarf the buildings that are currently here. And I know that the intent was to keep the historic charm of the building or of the downtown area. So I would encourage you to revisit that and not push that height limit, because when I look across the street, there is a three-story building across the street from us. It's the building that Disco Darling is and some of those other boutiques. There is a condo, they do have a three-story building. It is quite tall. And if we're going to push it beyond that, I think we're going to dwarf the historic charm of the town. So please keep that in mind. I would personally recommend taking that four stories out and just say, "Up to three stories" would be my recommendation, because that does fit your current zoning height. Couple other things that kind of popped out to me was on some of the goals, I would love to see something with a little more teeth. You know, some really, what are we really going to do? For goal number nine under services, it says, "The city will continue to provide municipal services that are appropriate to the level of the funds available." That's the goal. It doesn't seem like too much of a goal to me. I would love to see some specifics in there regarding the water and sewer, because those are very important to us and probably need to grow within the next 10 years. So maybe that needs to be readdressed. Two other services that are not mentioned in that section of the goal is our police and fire department. One of the things it says as the how to implement was to consolidate services with others. Does that mean we want to consolidate our police department? Are we going to bring in the sheriff's department and have them take over? What does that mean? I would like to kind of flesh that out a little bit. We have a great fire department. I would not want to lose any of these services by consolidating. Of course, the fire department is an authority, so that's great. But we need to look at these services, and what are we going to do with these services over the next 10 years? What do they look like? And finally, and this is what I thought I was really going to be talking about until I read the 89 pages, was I would love to see some goals for the downtown or the town itself. We have the Oklahoma property. For those who don't know, it's the property behind the library there. It's kind of the shape of Oklahoma. It doesn't have a, it's used, you know, for Riverwalk and those kinds of things. I would love to see a pavilion put there. Put our farmer's market in the pavilion. Get this, these goals. Flesh it out. Let's see what it looks like. What can we do that's big? What can we do? Yes, we've got to be able to afford it, and I realize we can't do multimillion stuff, but we do have DDA money, and that is in the DDA district. A fishing pier would be really cool. We have an island that is untapped. It used to be a park. I would love to see this master plan touch some of those things, so that we can really get a good look at what does the future look like? We can't predict it. We can't say exactly what it'll look like, but we can help steer it with this plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 215 and 1/2 West Main Street. I want to congratulate you on this project and give you thanks for the time that you spent on this. It's obviously, you put in a lot of time and effort, so thank you for that. I want to go back and repeat something I said a year ago, and I'm just thrilled with the Middleville Pavilion that they put up per their master plan. And I don't know if you haven't been there, but the Middleville, right in the center of the downtown, they decided through their master plan to put up a pavilion right next to the river. It's used all of the time for weddings and banquets and picnics and meetings and farmer's markets. And that started in their master plan, and it was funded through a DNR grant, and the DDA helped that. And so we really could do something like that. And I'm mentioning that to you because they told me they put it in the master plan. I don't know if that's totally appropriate, but I think to give some long-term goals for things, big items like that, would really help the city and the citizens focus on bringing our city to the next level. Some other ideas, for instance, I remember Marty a year ago mentioned improving Scout Park with some parking and trails and lighting and that. I think that would be an excellent use of planning for that, to enhance that facility, for that to increase the use of that area. The Oklahoma property would be wonderful to have some sort of pavilion. Possibly looking at, our traffic is becoming congested. I don't know if the master plan can help you look at traffic patterns or road patterns or trying to solve that sort of thing, but eventually, we're going to have to look in fixing the traffic pattern. Lastly, another idea is to develop a real plan for recreation park. I know there's, we've talked about different things, but I truly don't know what we're going to do with recreation park. The sign says trails. There aren't any trails. But that's a wonderful unused opportunity. The King Building is unused, so just think about adding a stretch goal like that to your master plan. Just a couple, a few details. I think your goal one and two are excellent about revitalizing the downtown and increasing the water and sewer services and working with the townships. Those two goals are fantastic. When I read goals three and four, they both say walkable community, stable community and walkable community. It seems like three and four could be combined, and this might be nitpicking a little bit, but, and then they immediately start talking about the rivers. So I'm a little confused on your goals three and four, where they're talking about the neighborhoods, but then they talk about the rivers and dredging the rivers in goal four. I just don't get that. Goal five, working with the township to develop land use policies. You mentioned M-25, but you don't talk at all about Lincoln Lake. So I'd like you to think about including both of the main north-south and east-west on the plan. On goal six, under transportation, this one's really good. You say work with M.D.O.T. to help pedestrians, bicyclists, and ADA access in the downtown. That's huge. Please, let's take that very seriously. Our walkability with the bricks and the unheathiness is difficult in the city, so that, again, that's a detail, but our multi-year plan should be how to improve our sidewalks, so that we can make it accessible for all. And lastly, on your goal nine, community services. Maybe I have an old copy, but the sentence just ends with efficient. Maybe there's a typo, but goal nine gets cut off somehow, if you could look into that. And I'll check my time here. I don't want to take too long. Chapter seven, the future land use. I think, as I drive in 21 often, I see a bunch of the homes, businesses and homes mixed together, and I think that's fine. But I think, long-term, we should think about what we want M-21 to look like. And I'm not saying, of course, the homes need to go away or the businesses need to go away. But you just, I think you should think about what M-21 should, right here in the downtown, should look like 20 and 30 and 40 years from now, in order to maximize the development of the city, the livability of the city, and also the economic development. So I guess I'm saying, under chapter seven, future land use, I'd like to see a little more long-term planning for the M-21, where there's small homes right next to big buildings. Done? That's it? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, I just kind of want to close that public hearing on the master plan. Any discussion on the master plan? Is there a long?
I have a question. I'm just curious. Process, you got forwarded to City Council for distribution?
Yep.
And City Council had a chance to make any input or changes on it before distribution, or were they just required to distribute as is?
So they can do either one. They opted, is my understanding, to basically just distribute it with the idea that I think there was interest in having maybe a joint meeting with the Planning Commission at some future date that hasn't happened yet. My anticipation is that would happen between now and their final adoption. So there's a couple things that I guess we could do. One is if you want to, you know, discuss or have me make some of the changes that were suggested tonight, we could certainly do that. You don't have to vote on that resolution if you want to make some changes. So that, alternatively, you could recommend as is. And then if we have a joint meeting later, I think, as long as the Planning Commission is involved, you could make changes. That is such a great meeting. What's a little funny with the way that the statute is written for a master plan is that if you send it to the City Council, they actually can't just unilaterally make changes without sending it back to you guys. So if they're going to be inclined to make some adjustments, that's going to have to happen with your input involved. So I think if we did that in a joint meeting, I think that would be fine. If you prefer to not do that, I guess, my suggestion would be that let's talk through some changes that you want to make now, and then you can vote on maybe final draft with some adjustments at the meeting in September. A lot of the topics in public discussions were very specific, and it's very difficult when you're, once again, correct me if I'm off the mark, it's very difficult to make a 10-, 15-year goal sheet or summary of what we want to do, and all these specific ideas are really good. And it brings me back to the penny survey that we did, and opened up all these topics and we were going over that data, and those were very specific, and we sort of took those general ideas, and we had to summarize and create goals that were broad enough to encompass as many of those ideas as we could. And I guess that's how the origin of some of these goals, they're not as specific as maybe you think they should be, but we were more so looking for long range, keep it open to all these possibilities, and that we surveyed the public. Yeah, I think, so a couple of comments to add to that. So some of the comments made tonight, I think, if you wanted to examine, those are fine, like when we talked about building height, densities of PUDs, clarification on what's permissible and how you want mixed-use districts or mixed-use designation type function, eliminating a reference to a fourth story. I think those are fine to make those kinds of changes in the plan. And the other thing that I guess I would point out is that some of the comments about specific projects or ideas might be covered in other plans. So a specific plan for recreation park, there is a specific plan for recreation park that was drafted a couple of years ago. The city also has an adopted five-year parks and recreation plan that's looked at every five years, so if we're talking about Scout Park or Sony Lakeside or some other park in the city with improvements to that, that's already probably any parks for recreation plan, or at least it's been thought of during that process. What about this specific ask, is it that I don't know? And then as far as the downtown is concerned, the city also has an adopted downtown placemaking plan that was adopted in 2018 or so. It has a lot of really great ideas to accomplish a lot of that stuff downtown that talks about, you know, how we develop, how we use the public spaces, how the streetscape is arranged, how we're accommodating pedestrians. So a lot of that is addressed, it's just not written specifically in here, and that's why, especially with downtown, we have a couple, in a couple of places, reference specifically adoption and implementation of the placemaking plan, because there are a lot of really good ideas in there, a lot of great design concepts that I think serves a great sort of jumping off point for future projects. So how we move forward from here is, we'll get to you guys. I'm happy to go either way.
I didn't know we changed from 140 to 150. That's brand new. I've never heard that before.
What do you mean?
For height.
So the zoning district maximum is 40 feet.
Right, or 40 feet.
Yeah, so, and that's the way this been. I think the point was that the master plan in downtown references that building could be three or four stories. The thought is that if we say, you know, if the Planning Commission, City Council says wants to encourage four stories, we might end up bumping that max up to 50 feet, or we might look at a PUD that's 50 feet or taller, you know, somehow, but it's still four stories, so I think, and I don't want to, where are you on there? I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I guess that was my interpretation, is that there's a little, there could be disconnect between our current zoning standards and what the plan calls for. It sounded like there was just some concern that we might be inching the height up maybe taller than some people are comfortable with. That's why I took that.
Is it fair to say that the master plan is conceptual, and things like the zoning ordinance and statutory, so I mean, we're not changing the zoning ordinance by writing it into the master plan?
Correct.
Or saying, hey, consider this in the future?
Yeah, so if somebody can do a four-story building that is within that 40-foot limit, fine. If they can't, well, then I guess you're not doing a four-story building. Unless they ask for a variance or a PUD, or they ask to change that limitation. So if they ask for a zoning change or ask for a PUD, you know, one of those considerations is obviously, well, through the master plan, so, you know, again, is there a potential window to a taller than 40-foot building? Yeah, this plan does, you know, open it. I think it throws it wide open to allow for something that's extreme, but it does, I would agree that it does sort of, you know, crack that open a little bit.
It's always a check and balance. Could us pay a little four-story that's 60 feet? Like, well?
Yeah, I mean, there's Planning Commission discretion with rezonings, especially with rezonings of PUDs, absolutely, or a tax amendment request or something like that. Discussion? I will entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 01-25.
I'll make that.
Is there some order? Any more discussion?
Can we somehow include or at least figure out if we want to do a joint session with City Council to discuss this?
Yeah, so, Mike, at our next City Council meeting, can we do a committee of the whole?
For Monday?
It's probably a little too early, isn't it?
I mean, we can probably set something up in September, for sure.
Okay, let's do that.
Yeah, I'll talk to the mayor, yeah, no problem.
Okay. Then we can do a committee of the whole, which will all meet, everything to discuss.
We only do this every couple decades. I don't want to miss any input.
Exactly.
So there's a motion on the table. Any more discussion? Sue, Volpaugh Wood, please.
Commissioner Cadwalder.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Holtz.
Yes.
Commissioner Godula.
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett.
Yes.
And Chair Ellis.
Yes. Very good. Okay, we had to do business. We have some guests tonight speaking on West Main Families Express. Would you like to come up and explain the project to us?
Did bring a easel, but, well, I'll still put it up behind me. It's here behind you. Commissioner, my name is Steve Woody from Enderville. I was a design engineer for the project. With me in attendance is Josiah Darvis from Families Express. First of all, thank you for your time and consideration and request. I'll give you a brief overview.